Okay, um, fifteen minutes. I'd like to call the, uh, to order the, where are we? The, um, Wednesday, September tenth meeting of the Delray Oaks Planning Commission.
You need the microphone?
Oh, yeah. Um, I'd like to call to order the, um, Sep- Wednesday, September tenth, two thousand twenty-five meeting of the Delray Oaks Planning Commission and take a roll call.
Commissioner Krieger?
Here.
Commissioner Gensel?
Here.
Commissioner Armani?
Present.
Commissioner Canetti?
Here.
Commissioner Machi?
Here.
Vice Chair Wood?
Here.
Chairman Hayward?
Here. I would like to lead us all in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, um, I'm kind of flying blind because I left my notes somewhere.
Uh-oh.
Consent agenda. Take a look at the consent agenda. Any questions?
The meeting of, to order, okay? No, no questions.
Okay. Do we, I figure we have to take a vote on the consent agenda?
Yes, you do.
All in favor, um?
We gotta make a motion or anything.
Yeah, go ahead.
I move that we approve the March twelfth, two thousand twenty-five Planning Commission meeting minutes.
Stuck in it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Public comment. Anyone wishing to address the Commission on Matters Not Appearing on the agenda may do so now.
I'm not public comment.
The public may comment on any other matters listed on the, on the agenda at the time the matter is being considered by the Commission. Uh, there will be a time limit of not more than three minutes for each speaker. No action will be taken by the Commission on Matters brought up under this item and all comments will be referred to staff.
Mike Berger, Fifteen Baxter Place. I just want to say thank you for, to all of you for dedicating your personal time to the city and to the residents of Delray Oaks. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you. Okay. Seeing nothing more, uh, we'll move on to reports. Uh, Building Activity Report. Any questions for clarification?
I have one question.
Okay.
So, I can't find it right in here right now, but there's a project on one Robertson, I think it is, the cul-de-sac, and it says that it's, uh, the permit has been extended. But I know as long as, I think as long as I've been here, that project has been underway. So, I'm just wondering if it has to be re-extended or what, what's happening there?
It was extended. It was extended.
Uh-huh.
Um, due to some personal issues.
Oh.
And, um, it's in progress right now.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you. Anybody else?
Nope. I thought maybe I found my cheat sheets. Not so lucky. Um, okay, um, we don't need to vote on that. Nope. Okay. Old business, there is none. New business, swearing of returning appointed planning commissioners, me, Mike Hayward, Anna Mahdi, Gary Krieger, and the newly appointed planning commissioner Vincent Machi.
So, what we're gonna do, if it's okay with everybody, I'm gonna have the returning folks come and stand here and I'll swear all three of you in, but then since this is Vince's first time, we're gonna have him be sworn in individually.
Okay.
I'm gonna make Gary walk. Sorry. And then if you could just hold that, that way you can be heard.
Okay.
Okay, raise your right hands. I state your name.
I, Mike Hayward.
Do solemnly swear that I will support and defend the Constitution.
I will support and defend the Constitution of the State of California.
Of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will and faithfully.
That I will and faithfully.
Discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
Discharge the duties upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
And then before you leave tonight, I'm gonna have you sign your oath of office. Okay, thank you. Okay, your turn, Vince.
Okay. It would've been easier with the team.
Okay. I state your name.
I, Vincent Machi.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend the Constitution.
That I will support and defend the Constitution.
Of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California.
Of the United States and the Constitution of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And that I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
Discharge the duties of which I'm upon to enter.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Okay.
You know it by heart.
Okay. Thank you to all the returning, uh, planning commissioners and welcome, Vince.
Thank you.
To the Planning Commission, yeah. Um, next, um, we're going to, um, have a little presentation honoring George Jackshaw for his thirty-four years of service to the Planning Commission. So, I have, I have notes too, so I'm gonna read them. Yes, I would. George, I would like you at the podium. Do you need me to grab the microphone too?
If I had known this, I might not have come. I was here to welcome. Yeah, this is a way to see the video.
You can stand right there and, uh, so, George, um, it's a good, uh, I get the great opportunity recognizing George, um, for what he has, uh, has and is still contributing to the city of Delray Oaks. Set that down, sorry. Um, and like so many families in Delray Oaks, George's family is multi-generational, um, living in your father's house and you've got a house. Um, he's noted Garage Sale George along with DRO, CAG, instrumental in planning and implementing the yearly ultra-successful citywide garage sale. It's no small undertaking. Um, he is, and I believe he has been, a, um, member of the Delray Oaks Citizens Action Group for many years. Um, he has helped numerous, uh, senior residents of this city for years, um, if you have the patience for that kind of service. Um, I know he's helped many in this city with various things. I know he's helped me with things and I've heard of other people who he's helped with projects and whatnot, and respectfully, George could be called the busybody of Delray Oaks. He has his finger on the pulse of, yeah, he has the pulse, um, finger on the pulse of what's going on around, uh, our city. Um, you'll find him often holding court with a group at the local Starbucks, so if you ever need him, ask a Starbucks where he is. But this evening, it's my distinct pleasure to recognize George's thirty-four years of service to the city of, um, city on the Planning Commission. He has chaired the Planning Commission for many years and has been a mentor to many of the planning commissioners, past and present. Um, I also think he is the longest-serving person on any organization in this city ever. It's with great honor that I get to recognize you, and with this small token and remembrance of your contribution, uh, if I may speak for the Commission, this is, uh, this cannot be fully rec- cannot fully, uh, recognize the debt of gratitude we owe you. I'm sure the, uh, the citizens of the city will feel the same way. So, George, thank you very much, and these are just a small token. I did happen to read, uh, this and it says, "In recognition of your thirty-four years of dedication, uh, dedicated service to the city of Delray Oaks, thank you for your humor and hard work on the Planning Commission."
Well, thank you. I appreciate that. Thank you very much. Well, I said it at the council meeting, uh, it's been an honor to serve not only the city, but with the commissioners, past and present. I want to really thank everybody. And, uh, I came here primarily to welcome Vince to take my spot, and I hope he has as much fun, uh, as I have, and it's a great, uh, team to work with, so, thank you very much. And Karen, thank you for all your help. I've said that before. Thank you. Things, things like, "George, are you coming to the meeting? You're a little late."
Yeah.
Ooh, meeting!
What meeting?
Thank you.
Uh, we'll bring it back to the Planning Commission. If anybody would like to say something or add anything? Go ahead, Gary.
Sure, no, I'll just say, uh, obviously, thanks, it's been fun. Uh, I'll get to still keep working with you at CAG, so you're not, not going away. But thanks for the mentoring. I remember, uh, you were the one who, when I first got on, that really just reached out and made the effort, says, "Hey, you know, come on, watch how we do this, what do you think," you know, and that was, um, I really appreciated. No one else took the trouble to do that, and, uh, that mentoring was, uh, very much appreciated. Thank you.
Uh, George, you were, it was great working with you. Um, we continue to work with you, uh, as citizen to citizen, and I know you will stand up and give us your common sense comments as you always have, and your historical and hysterical knowledge of past, uh, really makes the, the job a little easier, uh, having, having somebody with the knowledge and past knowledge is great. Thank you very much for all your years.
George, your perseverance is remarkable. Uh, we truly appreciated all of your, uh, remarks, but I also very much appreciated having the history that you could provide, especially to us newer commissioners, to help us really understand how we got to where we are. So, thank you, and I look forward to seeing what you're gonna do for the next thirty-four years.
Oh, I live down the street from George. He taught me the very important thing, the Delray Oaks wave. Yes, when I first moved in, yes, he waved to everybody, which was great, and also as a planning commissioner, brought me along and said, "Come on, let's go to the first, first site and how to do it and what to look for and who to talk to," and it was, thank you for, yeah, great neighbor and a great commissioner.
It's been a pleasure serving with you. Your attitude is just really fun to have around, very pleasant, um, light. I've also had, uh, I haven't served with you for too, too long, but I've had the, um, the opportunity to appreciate a variety of processes that you've put in place, such as inviting people to or making people think you should go and look at what they're proposing, so go in front of their house and look and try to understand the environment and all that kind of stuff, processes in habits, good habits, in, in doing what we're doing. So, thank you for your service, for many years of service and good luck.
Yeah. George, I didn't get to work with you, um, but from what everyone's saying and from what I've heard, I'm sure you, you were awesome and you were funny and all that kind of good stuff, and, um, thank you for your thirty-four years of service, and I have some, looks like I have some big shoes to fill, so I'm, uh, looking forward to doing that.
We can go out to public comment if anybody else has anything to say. Don't mean to put you on the spot, but.
George, I may have been around as long as you have, but, uh, haven't been serving in the public capacity, and, um, I feel like that may have been some of the longest I've ever heard of, of any planning commissioner serving in the area. So, I really think that, um, I really respect that. Um, I always also really appreciate your lightness and your humor and your support, and I also feel like lightness, don't confuse lightness with not smartness, because your attitude and your knowledge has been really remarkable over the years. So, I've appreciated working with you and working for all the planning commissioners. It's been really fun, and I appreciate all the comments, because they're all so true. Good luck at this next thirty-four years. Thank you.
Okay. Seeing nothing more, um, we'll go to announcement. Uh, anybody have any announcements, Gary?
Well, I won't be there, because I'll be out of town for yet another wedding, but, uh, picnic's coming up the fourth, right? October fourth? So, uh, yeah, trying to make it down. It's shaping up to be a good time, a lot of stuff going on.
Great.
A lot of people showing up.
Um, again, George, thank you very much. Uh, I attended, uh, through the mosquito abatement district that I represent Delray Oaks on, uh, the two thousand twenty-five California Special District Association Annual Conference, and I would have the opportunity to attend a number of breakout sessions that are not, were not necessarily, uh, applicable to the mosquito district, but definitely applicable to the Planning Commission here. So, it was a, a double, a double win for me, and, um, I've provided a breakout, um, a summary of the breakout sessions that I attended, and, uh, there's definitely some information that I think, uh, I gained, and if anybody ever has an opportunity to attend conferences like this, uh, do take that opportunity. And, uh, everybody has a copy of, of the thing, so I don't know if you attach that to the minutes or not. That would be great.
Commissioner Armani?
I don't have any announcements, but I do have a request, and, uh, now that we have completed our sixth cycle, uh, which has been quite the process, uh, learning process and very extensive process, but we should congratulate ourselves on that. But I'd like to, in October, take the time to actually re-review the program changes that we have committed to as a planning commission, so that we can really start planning on how to achieve those programs that we have committed to. So, at least take the very first start at reviewing what those are again and, and beginning our plans to complete those.
Okay. Commissioner Machi?
I have no comment.
Commissioner Machi?
I'm gonna be meeting with a group of local architects on Saturday, and, uh, so I'll have more to say next time. I want to find out how things are going, being that it's my field, yeah.
All right. And on, um, what, September twenty-sixth movie night, Back to the Future, uh, seven fifteen in the park. Hope everyone can make it. Couple people.
Good. I don't really have anything much to say.
One thing to say if I can.
You may.
Out of order.
After hearing all the accolades, I just want the commissioners to know, we're here to serve the citizens, and I always felt to make it as easy and pleasant for them as possible. I had a friend that was a policeman, and one of his philosophies, philosophies was, "Don't go by the letter of the law, go by the spirit of the law." So, you know, when something like, um, wanna go into a setback, you know, we have to think about not the letter of the law, but how to make it easy on that person to do what he would like to do. And thank you for the accolades again.
Okay. The only comment I have is, uh, I got to meet with Granite Construction, so they could go into my yard with a big digger and dig up our lower property, but, uh, that was interesting. Kathy was sitting at the table, all of a sudden, see, she's a big digger down there. So, anyway, um, that's all I have. Next meeting, uh, Wednesday, October, uh, eighth at, uh, six P. M. This meeting's adjourned.
I will not be here. That's true. I'm gonna be on the east coast with my mom. I'm gonna go to some fall fall.
Oh, I'm just looking at a croaker eel in my hair. Oh, I'm just looking at October 8th, my hair is totally green.
I love that tree.
I'll tell my wife, she dresses me.
Oh, good. I am here, I'm not here the next week.